I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So in attendance tonight, we have Commissioner Huggins, Commissioner Johnson, Commissioner Freiburger, Commissioner Batizzi, and Commissioner Fernet. I'm sorry, Joe. Absent are Commissioners Maddox and Penno. So has everybody had the-
Maddox is here.
Here he is. Okay. Commissioner Maddox is in attendance. Only Commissioner Penno was absent. Hi, Silas. So has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at last meeting, last meetings minutes? And are there any comments? Yes, no? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the March 16th minutes.
I actually do have one comment, but it's gonna take me a second to go back to the other screen, so. So I just wanted to confirm under unfinished business, um, second to the last paragraph where it references section seventeen forty XXX digital signs, and it said, "Create a minimum of fifty percent of the sign can be digital of the sign area." I thought that was a maximum, and-
Can you reread how it reads?
It says, "Create a minimum of fifty percent of the sign can be digital of the sign area."
Yeah, so that should be maximum.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that because it's relevant to the discussion later, and uh, let's see here. Yep, I think that was it.
You know, there's something in there as well regarding the the eleven o'clock, what do you call it, the turn off in the mixed commercial, but we're gonna go on to that as we go through the reading.
I noticed that, too.
Yeah. So anybody have a, with that following change, does anybody have a motion to approve the minutes with the change on that section seventeen dot forty dot XXS to create a maximum of fifty percent?
I saw move.
Commissioner Freiburger moves to approve the minutes with the one change. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Maddox to approve the meeting minutes with the change. So let's, let's move on. So, so it is ordered. Catherine, has there been any, were there any comments for the, let me, let me open it up first, I'm sorry. So at seven thirty-five, we'll open up the general comments section, and if there were any submissions via email, they can be read into the record now. Catherine, was there anything? Yes, no?
I just double-checked, and no, we did not receive anything.
Okay, so we will close that section at six thirty-five. So we have no unfinished business. I'm sorry. I'm going to now open the public hearing for the digital sign regulations, and it is six thirty-six. So we're gonna open up the public hearing. Is there anybody that submitted any comments that you would like to read into the record? And do we have anyone in attendance that would like to, you know, have their say and provide some testimony?
Yeah, I would like to say something about the digital sign.
Okay, David, hang on one second, please. So was there, was there any written submissions, Catherine?
No written submissions.
Okay. So David, can you please introduce yourself, name, full name, and address, and the floor will be yours?
My name is David Mercer. The address of our business is two oh one West State Street in Cedar Wally E&amp;E Lumber.
Okay.
And we, you know, basically, we just are looking to get a digital sign. It's a very, I think, vital asset to our business as far as expanding what we can offer to, you know, customers, and then in turn offer to the community as far as announcing events, and just, you know, continue to provide the growth of the community as we get more and more people in, and just try to keep them informed, and help with our ongoing growth of our business without, I feel, distracting from anything from the city. And just hope that, hopefully, that people see it that way, that we should be able to have a few things. There are other digital signs in town in closer proximity to the central core district than our business, so we would hope that, that it would be allowed.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, I think that's basically the gist of it. Yeah, I mean, just that, I mean, obviously, we respect the, you know, our culture of our community in the long term. You know, history that we have, and don't feel that this distracts from it at all. There's certainly tons of new architecture and new things in our city that are, certainly wouldn't be termed as old, I guess, in as far as historic.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Merriman, I see that you're here as well. Would you like to say anything to add to the conversation? I see someone else has joined us as well.
I believe that's Doug Merriman, City Supervisor, and I think the number is Michelle Grace.
Okay, okay. Does anyone have any additional comments that they would like to add to this as part of our public hearing? Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing at six thirty-nine, and now move on to the new business. So John, would you like to give us the entry here, please?
Did you, I'm sorry, did you say, moving on to new business, or?
Are we gonna have any planning commission discussion of-
Sure.
-the proposal as it is now?
Well, I figured we would do that when we start going through the the attachment, which is the staff report on the, on the new sign code.
Okay, I can give a, I can give a quick update of what's been changed, and I think everybody's aware that, you know, right now that you're not allowed to have digital signs in the central business district, and in the rest of the city outside the CBD, there's not, there's not really any tight rules for digital signs. So the planning commission entered a process of first creating regulations for digital signs in general, and then creating sort of a higher level of design for digital signs within the central business district. Catherine, if you could share the map that we're, that you put together for us?
Sure. It's a little finicky on the iPad, so I apologize in advance.
So first, the oh, like to show the, the areas where the signs are going to be different within the central business district and the rest of the city. So for the digital signage will not be allowed in most of the central business district, but it will be allowed along the street frontages shown on the map on the screen in green. So that is the entirety of State Street, so any, any business fronting along State Street, any business along Eastern Street, any business along West Ferry Street between Highway twenty and the railroad or eastern. A portion of Puget and a three-block portion of Murdoch Street between the railroad to the north and State Street to the south. So that, this is an area the planning commissions, these maps are something the planning commission have looked at quite a bit to determine the best areas, and this is the direction that we received, the staff received at the last planning commission meeting. And this, this really is the areas with commercial areas in the CBD, with the exception, of course, of Metcalf Street and Woodworth Street and Ferry Street in that core CBD area. So the planning commission wanted to be able, wanted the businesses that were not in the, like, the historic downtown part to be able to have some sort of digital signage, but also recognize that a lot of the CBD is actually residential in nature. So those areas are also left out because it doesn't stand to reason to allow digital signage in areas that are predominantly residential. So that is where this map has come from. And then as far as the differences between signage in the CBD and the rest of the, the rest of the town, digital, digital displays in the CBD are more or less restricted to reader boards. You know, not, not the full functioning digital displays that show images and pictures and videos and those sorts of things, but limited to just text. And then in the central business district, the the text is to be one color with a dark background, unlit background, and the, and then there's some standards in these proposed regulations for how bright they can be, which is less of a concern, really, which is to text reader board, but it's in there anyway. And there's also some regulations on how fast it can be. So there's two ways the text to be able to display. One would be, you know, a set of words pop up and stays there, and then, and then that set of words disappears and the next set of words appears. So for that, the messages shall have a minimum of seven seconds of dwell time. Flashing animation, movement, video imaging, and scrolling messages are prohibited. So that, that's, that's the way the planning commission wanted to have the reader boards read in the downtown. Then in the rest of the city, there, there is some allowances for text and images, but not fast-moving. We did find a way to to, to allow scrolling and set a standard for how fast it can go. And that is on page six, I think, at the very top. I'm sorry. Nope, it's number six on page five, towards the bottom of the page. Static messages shall have a minimum of five seconds dwell time, dwell time, and displays which scroll onto the signboard must hold for a minimum of five seconds, including scrolling. So there's a typo there that will correct. And you can scratch out where it says two. It's intended to be five seconds scrolling, including scrolling. So instead of trying to find some fancy way of measuring how fast the letters scroll across the screen, we, we put this dwell time language in it that we saw in some other jurisdictions and made a lot of sense. We spent, I spent a lot of time looking at digital display YouTube videos and instructional manuals, trying to find out what sort of standard they use for scrolling speed, and there really isn't one. In the settings of those, they'll have like a number, one through ten, or some might be one through sixty, or just whatever standard they do, one being slow, sixty being fast. So there's no real that terminology that they use. It's just faster or slower. So we put in a a five-second scrolling requirement, including, so that's the time that it scrolls, and any dwell time. And I think that addresses most of the comments that the planning commission had on the previous rendition, so unless you have any further questions for staff, we'll let the planning commission do what they do best.
Does everybody want to go to the beginning of attachment one? And that would be page one on seventeen forty oh one oh, general provisions. And I, John, I just have a question here. On seventeen forty dot oh one oh, a number seven, new businesses, sometimes it takes a while for them to get signed, they're pretty expensive, depending on what you're buying. Would we want to make a provision where they can at least get a banner up there?
No, we're talking about digital signs. You're talking about opening up the sign code to all sorts of changes. That would be a little bit concerning at this point to, to, to expand to the so number seven does allow banners, and we've, a few years ago, we, we had allowed, we, we went through a whole process of allowing banners, but a certain amount of days, so it is addressed.
Okay, so if we're gonna keep the discussion to the digital sign aspect of it, I emailed you and Catherine just a link. We're on our exceptions and speaking solely on the digital aspect of it. There's technologies that, they're called billboard vans. Their sole purpose is advertising. Okay, right down to a giant LED screen of all the commentary that came up in the last meeting using the signage on I-5 as an example. So we're putting an exception here for any vehicle where their sole purpose is to park them and put up these monster displays or drive them or whatever. So since we're talking about the digital sign element of what we're trying to do here, I think we should include something that addresses the same standards that we're, we're talking about here in the digital signage that would apply to billboard van concept, where somebody could just take what they have on I-5, just park it on their property, and off it goes. And I'm not talking about just the variety that people drive around. Any thoughts from anybody else? Commissioner Fernet, you, you felt pretty strongly about the I-5 signs. So now the fact that you can mount them on top of a truck and park them someplace, I mean, we want to address that in our digital code as well.
So there's an exception on here for signs on vehicles. I'm looking for it right now.
It's on page four, under F.
Oh, there it is.
Two. So that, that's not new code. That's our existing code. That's been in there for at least fifteen years.
Well, explain currently licensed and complies with all their ordinances and laws, because does that eliminate what Commissioner Batizzi is talking about?
That just means that it needs to be a legal, street-worthy vehicle that has current tabs and, you know, meets DOT requirements for a safe vehicle.
Oh, not, not a license for a sign, then.
That's the point.
Yeah, we don't, we don't regu, we don't regulate vehicles in our signage.
So anyway, these billboard vans are exactly that. They're advertising platforms that you could take that I-5 sign, they get mounted on top of a vehicle, and they just get parked at the location of whatever business they're at. So if we have all these standards for reader boards and things like that, and I, I get it that this has been there for fifteen years, however, as technology evolves, what do you call vehicles are definitely being utilized as the advertising platform. So in essence, let's say on Highway twenty, right, you have a lot of big, you know, potential parking lots for used cars or, or whatever. What's to stop somebody from putting one of those billboard vans, trucks on that property with their own signage? Okay, that, since it's on a, on a, on a road-ready vehicle, okay? That's, its sole purpose is just for a sign. So all I'm saying is it's a bit of a loophole right now, based upon what technology is out there to take care, to take advantage of that. I mean, if you're in front of a, just Google billboard vans, and you've got a better idea of exactly what we're talking about here.
If you've ever been to Las Vegas, they drive up and down the-
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and they are, they are very bright.
Yeah, yeah. So what's to stop somebody from parking it and doing the exact same thing? And then that's my point. So in essence, it would be, because, go ahead, Silas.
I just have a hard time imagining how you can regulate that underneath the sign code. Because a vehicle is a totally independent thing, and the business owner could say, oh, that's not, I mean, it might not be owned by the business, or, you know, I, I, I mean, I think that the city could maybe regulate that type of behavior some other way, but I just don't see how within the sign code, we could effectively regulate it, because it, it, it just seems like there's too much variability there, and it, I, I I think it's outside of the scope of this personally, but I, I appreciate your concern, and I share your concern. The last thing I'd want are those billboard vans driving up and down Metcalf Street like it's Las Vegas. And I would surely be annoyed if there was one, you know, parked out in front of City Hall across the street from my house, but I, I'm not sure that this is the place to regulate that, because this, this whole sign code is specifically talking about signs that are fixed to buildings, and there's a permit process for that and everything else. And so I, I could be convinced otherwise, maybe, but that's kind of where I'm at right now.
I think there's a middle ground here, because if somebody, and it, it's not just the drive style. There's styles that actually mount that full LED screen on the top of the the vehicle whereby maybe we could put something in there, if it's there, that they're parking it, okay? That, that is the purpose, instead of sticking something in the ground like a pylon sign, but actually just putting the sign on a vehicle that's parked there specifically for that advertising function. I think there might be some, some leeway that says, hey, you just can't park it to violate the sign code, because that's exactly what somebody would be looking to do. And all I pointed it out was, that technology is out there, and if somebody wanted to utilize it and just park a vehicle with that display technology on it, that we are looking to, what do you call it, to manage, it might be something to add that in there, that it can't be parked permanently, and that was its sole purpose. I mean, here it's talking about, like, the older code, you know, like beacon plumbing on the side of a van that's going back and forth. These other platforms are specifically to just sit in a place and have that technology deployed on the vehicle itself, whether it's on the side, like John was talking about, like Vegas, but there's other ones that actually have that LED attached to the roof with a hydraulic lift on it that does the same thing that you have on I-5. And I'm just bringing that up.
Well, I tell you what, staff is a little concerned about the constitutionality of regulating a licensed vehicle on the fly like this. I do suspect that regulating that type of that type of use is going to require us to do some legal research to see if that's possible. And so I might recommend, since I don't see the planning commission picking up this sword and running with it anyway, I, I'm inclined to recommend that we don't address that issue right now, but staff can, staff can continue to research it independent of this process, and if, if there's something we can do, we can, we can bring this back, and that can be an easy fix. You know, right now, we're trying to do comprehensive billboard electronic sign code. This is one nuance that I think we can probably address pretty quickly, once we get some more information. So my inclination is to leave it, leave it on the side for now and come back to it in a, in a different process. But this is the planning commission's decision. That's just a recommendation.
As we move on to the new, on page six, there's a, there's a, it's a difference of what was said in the last meeting. I think this is where Commissioner Freiburger was looking at as well. He said that in the, I believe, in the mixed commercial, that you can leave these on all the time. That was in the last meeting minutes, that we were gonna strike that, but it's, it's back in on, on this version here that says at eleven o'clock or about an hour afterwards, they need to be turned off. We want to revisit that, people, and here's why. Mixed commercial has a decent residential portion to that code. I mean, do we want the ability where someone has decided to put commercial on the bottom and go residential on the top and directly across the street is an electronic reader board that's on twenty-four by seven? Any thoughts? We'll take that as a no.
So I apologize. So we're talking about number two, number C-two on page six, where it says, "Digital signs may be used after dusk only until eleven PM, or if the advertising is an on-premise message about an event at that site where the sign is located for up to one hour after said event." So am I to understand that the planning commission wanted that stricken from this at the last planning commission meeting? If that's the case, we can strike that, and I, I must have just missed it in my notes.
It was actually on page, it was on page five on, I'm sorry, I jumped that. On page five, we were talking about the mixed commercial. I don't think we might change that in the CBD.
Right. I think my recollection was that we wanted it to be, to them to be shut off at night in the CBD, but not in the mixed commercial. That's my recollection of the conversation.
And that's in the meeting minutes, yes.
Okay, and so, so I'm sorry, on page five, B-two.
B-two, correct.
Okay. So we, is it, so I'm going to strike that from, from this draft, if that's what the planning commission kind of gives me the nod to do. All right. I'm seeing some thumbs up and nods.
So I have another matter of language, and specifically, I don't know if we addressed it for the mixed commercial zone, but specifically, let's call this section C-eight, about the fifty percent of of the sign can be used for digital sign purposes, and the language says fifty percent of the allowed sign surface area may be used for digital sign purposes. And to me, that means that you could have the entire sign, or nearly the entire sign, as a digital sign, as long as it didn't exceed fifty percent of the gross area that's allowed. And so if you decided to have a smaller sign, almost the entire thing could be digital. And I believe that by my intent, when I raised this issue last time, and I think we all sort of agreed on it, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we wanted fifty percent of the sign to be digital, so that there was at least half of the sign that was a non-digital element. And so I think just by striking allowed, that's all that's necessary. So it just says, "Up to fifty percent of the sign surface area may be used for digital sign purposes." And the entirety of the sign won't ever be able to exceed the allowed sign surface area based on other parts of the code. And the entirety of the sign won't ever be able to exceed the allowed sign surface area based on other parts of the code. And. I don't know if we addressed it in the mixed commercial zone about whether a greater percentage of the sign could be. The same language exists in both sections, but.
Commissioner Maddox, you're absolutely right that that was the intent and. I looked to some other cities that had regulations and I used their that that required that and I used their language. And I I missed the possibility that it could be interpreted differently. So yeah, let's change it to make sure that it's done properly. That's why we do this. So we have other people look at it and make sure that it makes sense and says what we wanted to say. So I appreciate that comment.
Are we changing it in both locations then or just the one location?
I'm perfectly fine with changing it in both locations. You know, I I think that. There's value in having non digital, you know, excluding fully digitized signs, but.
You want to see as well, right? I mean, we want it to be consistent with. Any other comments as people have worked their way through this?
I'm all good. I I read through it twice or three times and I that was my only concern was. That issue there, so. As far as that goes, I'm I'm in favor of moving forward with it.
John, I guess at this point, since those are just a couple of little changes, I'm going to hold off on making a. To to do the recommendation to make a motion to recommend it until those little changes are are put in at the next meeting and then do the recommendation then. Does that make sense?
I don't think that's entirely necessary. These are very mild directions and everybody seems to be on board. I know that there's some individual, some people that are interested in getting this moved forward. So that's why.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to chat to chapter. Seventeen point four zero Seadrill Woolly Municipal Code and chapter three of the design standards and guidelines. Additional standards for the central business district. Reflecting the minor text amendment or changes that we've just discussed.
Do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion to to to. Recommend to the city council that this is approved by Commissioner Maddox and a second by Commissioner. Johnson, can I have a vote, please? All in favor, I. Okay, so it's unanimous. Motion is carried and.
But before we move on from that, I'm just going to list the the specific changes that that. And Commissioner Huggins has his hand up.
Sorry, I I just wanted to say that I abstain from voting. You guys have done a bang up job on this, but I missed the entire process on this. So I'm just going to abstain and say that you guys, I really like what you what you came up with on it. So just want to go on the record there. Thank you.
So I'm just going to list those specific changes that we talked about. So it were clear under seventeen forty. XXB or I'm removing line two. And I am adding the language. That reads digital sign shall be integrated into a standard sign surface area. Digital signs are not permitted independent of a standard sign. Up to fifty percent of the sign surface may be used for digital sign purposes. The digital sign shall count towards the allowed digit allowed sign surface area as calculated in seventeen forty oh two oh. And then further. On number six, B six, there was some, there was a typo where in the second line where it said signboard must hold for a minimum of two, five seconds. They just eliminated the two to make it five seconds. And. Then under C, which is the CBD and public zone signs. I removed the word allowed in the second sentence, so it now reads up to fifty percent of the sign surface area may be used. For the digital sign purposes.
Thank you. Like that. That's a recap of what they I believe they they said.
Okay, thank you for the discussion and the vote.
John, I might have missed it. Did you also remove allowed from? Number eight under B. Did you just say that?
I did, and I said it without allowed, yeah.
Okay, okay, sorry.
I thank you that no, that that. Keep track.
Two places. So and and we removed the eleven PM. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that was line two under.
Okay, okay, sorry the the way it was. Okay, thanks.
No, great, great detail. I love it.
Okay, we ready for the new business? Updates to the Seadrill Woolly Design Review Standards and Guidelines Manual to address buildings in the central business district. So just a little background. So I had a meeting with the mayor. Last week on Monday for that would be quick, but we just ended up chatting for an hour and a half and. We started talking about this particular subject here and. It's something that she felt especially on the outdoor seating area. There needs that that needs to be addressed as well as how that's that's set up. But let's move on to this and John, take it away.
Absolutely. So. As you've probably heard through the city council, I think we talked about it at the the last joint city council planning commission meeting. There's been some. Dismay at the some of the development in the downtown area, particularly adding roll up doors. To one of the businesses on Metcalf Street and the the appearance of that building and it's, you know, changes to that historic building. So that that's started a healthy debate about, you know, are our design standards good enough? The council considered putting a. A moratorium on new development in the CBD to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again. And. You know. After reviewing the design standards and the design regulation code. We determined and discussed with the city council and the and the city attorney that. There is enough teeth in our design standards to really prevent something like that from happening further. But. They're definitely, there was a consensus that our our design standards needed updating. They need more clarity. They need to address the specifics of such changes. Some of the things that staff has noticed is. It doesn't require enough, you know, like window edge on storefronts on business on on new development businesses. It doesn't address what windows need to look like, how big they need to be on existing buildings. So it's tough to. Necessarily say what can and can't be done. So we wanted to to do some major updates to the design standards in the central business district. With an eye towards protecting their historic buildings and making sure that the new commercial development. Looks like commercial development and really feels like a commercial downtown core. So to kick this off, we've included in this memo for this project. The existing additional standards for the central business district. Also, we've included chapter two, which is, I'm sorry, we've also included the the general. All standards and guidelines for all development in. In the city because those two sections within the design standards refer to each other a little bit. So. We. We put both of them in there so that the planning commission could review them. There's really, you know, only. Nineteen, page nineteen, there's there's only like eight pages here. I know it's a little early for us to go through and and start to. Suggest making changes. So hopefully the planning commission's had a chance to look through this. If you haven't looked through it and think about. While you're doing so, think about it as like a review from a reviewer's standpoint. And think about it from an applicant's standpoint. And so that may require a couple of iterations to go through with a different mindset each time. And and think, okay, you know, I you know, I want to do it from the developer's standpoint. You're like, I want to do this. You know, you get a picture in your mind and you go through the design standards and you and you look at it and say, how does this affect what I want to do? What can I do? What are what are these guidelines and standards leading my development to look like? And then look at it from, you know, a reviewer's perspective or maybe a downtown historic preservationist or whatever. Whatever sort of mindset you want to take. And you think about, you know, what? What are what are we trying to protect? What are we trying to avoid? And. How are these standards going to help us to those goals? That's what I'm going to do when I go through these and and try to to make updates. You know, we staff has the advantages of whenever somebody applies for a building permit. We review them and then we see. What somebody designs based on these. And it's a little eye opening that, you know, in particular, one of the things that. One of the things that I I see and hear that is consistently a concern is the amount of blank wall that is. Allowed by these standards, so. It's pretty loose, you know, it says no more than thirty feet or twenty five feet or something. And then when you look at the side of a building that's, you know, one or two stories tall or three stories tall and you think of a big blank area like, wow, that. Twenty feet's a big blank area. So that's one thing it really needs to. That we need to address for sure. And that's not the only thing by any stretch of the imagination. These are these are. Difficult standards to put together because you need to know a lot about what you're trying to do. And then you got, then you also have to know what are the million other things that somebody else might think about and try to do and. Is that going to work? Are standards enough to to prevent something really weird from happening? So we have a good start because we haven't had any. Fuchsia buildings. Three story fuchsia buildings with, you know, a giant blank wall happen. But, you know, can it? Think about the case of. In, you know, in Walla Walla, their design standards, somebody painted a two and a half story mural on their of an octopus on their toy story. And if you've ever been to downtown Walla Walla, they they have a large. Intact historic downtown, much like Seadrill Woolly, but bigger. And the community was unhappy with it and their design standards actually did prevent that. So they were able to lean on their design standards and say, no. You know, you need to take that down and it turned into a whole big case. But the city, actually, their design standards were strong enough that they they did win that case. Happened to be a giant fuchsia octopus. It's kind of it's kind of interesting looking, but it didn't fit in their downtown area and. That's just the kind of thing. I don't know if you remember five years ago, maybe before the. The Iron Mountain Grill took over. That was the castle too, and they they tried to do something interesting and they painted. A brick facade on the front and it could have been done better, but it did meet design standards. For the front of the building because it was painted to look like brick, but. It's hard to hard to do without paying somebody a lot of money to make that to be done right. So. These are things that we're we would love to try to catch. But I don't know if that sort of detail is going to be. Necessary or prudent. So that's something you also want to think about is, you know, how detailed do you want to to see the 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 standards? I I think the direction of the city council is that they should be pretty pretty well detailed. So that's why we're here.
We can add in, go ahead, Commissioner Maddox.
I don't want to get too in the weeds about this right now, but I'm just a little bit curious about. What the exact opposition to what happened at the bullpen was. I I mean, I have my own opinions about it, but. I I'm just curious about. What were some of the things that caused this sort of? Uproar and I don't know if it was even an uproar or not, but.
It was an uproar.
So in in my conversation with the mayor a week ago. And and it's something that we should look at here because we're doing everything from doors to awnings. It was the outdoor seating area and the way that was put together. That was one of her concerns. She just felt that it could have been done in a much better way, not just that railing that goes straight on down. And that's one section in this design standards here that we don't have that. We could put some things together for outdoor seating for different restaurants. And, you know, in the days of COVID right now. That that that's actually a really good thing to do. So it wasn't necessarily, I don't believe, the the garage doors, which I don't, the the white, I mean, you could have painted it something. Different that was more reflective because I've seen this done specifically in Yalstown up in Vancouver. But have taken the older historic buildings and they've done something similar to the what the bullpen did. But the colors are more matching to the building. Here's just one big white thing. But it was the the outdoor seating that. She felt is something we should address as well. We don't have anything in here addressing outdoor seating.
So I can say about the bullpen that, yes, it it was the quality of the garage doors that caused the uproar. They they look like. They look like garage doors on the mechanic's garage and not commercial. Roll up doors at the train wreck two in in Burlington, which are much more expensive. But much nicer aesthetic. It I mean, as before the bullpen put up the railing. I mean, people are actually honestly thought that it might be a car repair shop.
Okay, so that's good to hear because I I wasn't clear about whether it was, I I mean, I think that. Those garage doors are ugly personally, but I don't mind the fact that they put in garage doors. Like I actually kind of like the fact, you know, if they had been nice, all glass, like commercial style garage doors, I think it would have been a really nice. Upgrade. And so I didn't know if it was the fact that it was garage doors period or. And then, um, also, what was the process that like presumably they got building permits to do that? And they had to go through some kind of designer view to do that or did they not at all or?
That's a whole, that's a whole different issue, but. We won't get into the details of their permitting. The process. So. The the long and short is, you know, our our standard. The the long and short is, you know, our our standard, you know, had they come and asked if they could put those garage doors in. It's, we don't think our design standards would allow it, but uh, you know. It there, it's not real clear. Like, we we think they need to be stronger to to make sure that the doors, that those doors would be done. More in an aesthetic style that fits a commercial. And maybe not historic, you know, that the term I've heard used from a commissioner or the council member is, you know, we could. Have a mix of new and old to still preserve the the historic look, but. You know, quality is clearly important too, because it was, it was really the aesthetics of them. Of these doors and not necessarily that it was a roll up door. Uh, also, you know, with discussions with council members. The that was not a bad thing and and could be a very positive thing. Um, for the downtown and staff would agree with that too. So it's not saying, you know, we're not trying to say no roll up doors, but. You know, a a higher standard of roll up door meant for that purpose and not for a residential garage.
Correct. Okay.
It's it's a good point of the complexity of it. Like, who would have thought? That we would have to include language to say, you know, it needs to be commercial grade. That matches the, you know, the higher quality downtown type style instead of. You know, just saying roll up doors. So we need to be careful and start thinking to that level of down in the weeds.
No, we have design standards for the amount of glazing. I remember we were doing the PRD code that Paul Woodmancy brought up about. You know, the requirements for glass. So I think we could approach it very similar in this instance, if we're talking. To include that as an option for people and then. Put guidelines in is exactly, you know, the amount of glass that needs to be there, style and commercial is a pretty general term too.
I I saw, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I I don't know how relevant this is, but I believe the taproom has a roll up door on the side there. Is that kind of more what? Something an example of what would be looked at more of the commercial kind of or something?
That roll up door was existing from its days as. Uh, you know, was it a garage before it was a flower shop? I mean, it's a cinder block building. The kind of very barren the inside, so it may have, it may have been. Some sort of commercial facility like that before instead of instead of retail. And so you bring up a good point. You know, the design standards are for new development and for changes and alterations. So. We wouldn't be going to downtown businesses and saying, you can't, you you need to take that. You know, go to, we wouldn't go to the local twenty and say, you need to take that door off and replace it with a. Commercial. Style retail door with, you know, this amount of glazing and whatnot. So it's just for new and 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 changes. And that's a good, and then speaking to back to Commissioner Fatizzi, that the amount of glazing is a great, great way to put it like. That's one way we might have been able to address the roll up doors at the bullpen.
And to be fair, the roll up door at the. Uh, the local twenty is a commercial door. It's not, you know, that's a commercial style roll up door. It's not like one. Glazing or not, it's not one that would be. In like somebody's cul-de-sac garage, you know, and so the fact that it's been painted to match the building and. Whatever else ties it in and it looks totally like nobody's gonna second guess that situation. Right? I mean, it 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 looks like it's meant to be there and so. But I do think that on.
But if they were to put a new door in, it would be required to be, you know, after we make changes. It would be required to meet the design standards and that particular door, although it matches now. And is existing, if they were to change it, it would need to be whatever the design standards say.
Sure. And I think that like a fully glazed door is probably what we're looking for in those circumstances.
Then answers my question that I was trying to envision how how fancy or how um. Unique you were going for, so. Because roll up, roll up doors are kind of becoming a thing, not just with the pandemic, but just with modern. Eaterys, it opens up space during the summertime and whatever.
So I'm gonna put the question back to you. How fancy do you want your design standards to be? You'll be making the recommendations. So this will be the the Planning Commission's recommendation to the council. And staff will be here to make recommendations and chase down information like we always do and. Provide examples if you like, you know, maybe looking at Walla Walla isn't a bad idea. Um, ours, our current design standards are based on the city of Sumner, and I'm I'm sure that Commissioner Huggins can remember this process back in two thousand two or so. Before my time. I think they were last updated in two thousand five. Is that what I wrote in here? Originally adopted in two thousand four. And we've done some minor changes here and there, but uh, like really just changing a line here, here and there, not any, no substantial up update. So. This is long overdue. I don't know what the process was like in two thousand three and four when these were originally developed. Or if you had much time, if the planning commission had a lot of time to spend on it, or if they, or if you. Just kind of adopted somebody else's because you needed something now.
Had, we had Mark Crist, Architect Mark Crist at the time, was on the Planning Commission and and so he gathered up a lot of the information. And and spent a lot of time, we actually had an architectural review board up until about that time. Uh, that reviewed any any facade changes to to buildings. Um, one of the things that came out of that process was that the. Seidron Woolley didn't, at that time, didn't want to have a historic district. They weren't interested in sticking to the standards so so strictly that. That you'd have to have review every time you wanted to pick a paint color and stuff, so nobody wanted to make the main street a and and historic district. Um, so anyway, that was, that was one of the things I was gonna mention that that they were kind of, they didn't want it that strict. Um, and as for the bullpen, I I just wanted to comment that I went down the street the night they were chainsawing the openings out and I was like, yes. Um, roll up doors, finally something on the main street where I might actually want to go in the summer and and eat and and sit. Then when I saw what they put in the doors, I was like the rest of you. I was like, oh, gee, it could have been done, handled a little better. But I guess since we're in a pandemic, he's gonna survive to to upgrade later. So anyway. I I'm really thrilled about the concept and I think that it can be done in an architecturally, uh, in a way that fits with the architectural theme of the. Of the city, just needs a little more thought on the on the part of the of the business owners. So anyway, that's my piece.
So John, we would be adding into the building facades section to deal with the concept of roll up doors.
Well, that, I mean, we're 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 gonna be doing a substantial overhaul. But I'm gonna, what I think the the most prudent thing to do the next steps is. To bring some other design standards from other downtowns, some like some that have really high level of review like. Like Walla Walla's probably is, I haven't reviewed them that much. And other places that maybe are a little bit tight. I think what what council wants to see is. More detail in our design standards and staff would like that too. It makes our job a little easier. But we don't, you know, so how much more is really gonna be up to the planning commissions per view to see. You know, what level of detail you want to see. So I can bring you some examples from various places that have, you know, the the bar up here and maybe some the bar a little lower and then. Um, probably not anything. Where the borrower, ours is, and ours is pretty good. I'm I'm not bashing ours at all. There's just need that just needs some, it needs some updates. So bring some more detailed ones for you to look at and we can do what we always do, which is. Pick and choose things or maybe do a whole rewrite of the design standards that's. Based on what we see from others. I know we're not experts in it, but we're gonna be and it's gonna be a fun process.
Could you include the outdoor seating aspect of that in your research?
Yeah.
This meeting.
I've already made notes on, you know, amount of glazing, commercial and retail quality, outdoor seating standards. So these are all things that we already know need to be built into the design, the the new design standards. There any other questions? I know that, you know. Not a lot for us to review today. I wanted to orient you to what we're trying to achieve. Just get the juices flowing. And next month, we I'll I'll have some examples for you. And if there's any other requests you have, let me know now or in an email. Just start thinking about it. Any idea is a good idea at this point.
Anyone have anything to add? Okay, moving on. Planning Commission discussion, information items, none on agenda, but I'll open up the floor to anybody if they have anything to say. No one? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Only on the condition that everybody goes out and enjoys this beautiful day.
I'm only gonna get out myself right now.
Awesome, moved.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Maddox. Do I hear a second? Mission for debt seconds of motion. Motion is carried. Meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty three PM. See you guys next month.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good. Thanks a lot.